Good afternoon and welcome to the Council Committee of the whole of September 11th, 2024. I'll call this meeting to order and take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Creed, Denne, and Metis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that. And on today's agenda, under Reports, first item of business is Council Remuneration Review Committee report. I'll give the committee a moment to get situated. I understand Mr. Pollack will come and present. For those who might be watching at home, council implements a remuneration committee the year following, so the third year of our term, in order to assess remuneration of council. These are independent community members that were appointed to the committee. Then the committee now will come forward and present their findings and recommendations, and council will go from there to set up the next council based on this exploratory work. So, welcome, Mr. Pollack, and your microphone's on whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Worship, fellow council members. My name is Tab Pollack. I think I know everyone in the room here. First of all, just an opportunity to thank you for appointing the four of us to the Council Remuneration Committee. I'd like to thank the members of my committee. They're joining me behind here, just Jane Manning, Shane Mudrick, and Kenton Dewick, for their time over the past eight months, serving this committee, as well as their careful consideration of all of the aspects of this committee's work. Great discussions were had to ensure that we were making well-thought-out recommendations to the council. Lastly, our committee would like to thank Leona Hanson and Amanda from Legislative Services for all of their diligent work and insight during this process. Lastly, or sorry, council has in front of them our 37-page report. In ELC, Council Remuneration Review Committees conducted a thorough assessment with research and analysis to support our recommendations. They're selected to be fair, competitive, and fiscally responsible compensation model that's required to track future council members and compensate current members if reelected. I'm happy to go over any recommendations individually, but if you'd like, I can just provide a few highlights for council in regards to background on some of the recommendations, and then answer any questions you might have. One of the first ones I wouldn't mind talking about is Council Policy 100 and a procedure that's currently done by administration or for administration. Once we got into this during our review of everything, we found that we could eliminate a lot of duplication, some discrepancies, and really increase transparency for everyone involved by combining these and having council approve one policy that kind of oversees all of remuneration for council. During the process, for example, we saw that a mayor vehicle allowance in the procedure, which hadn't been upgraded for probably many years, four or five years, was not incongruent or congruent with the current policy approved by council four years ago. So, by combining those into one policy, I think we're going to see it'll be easier, first of all, for any future remuneration committees, be easier for the public to understand council itself, and for administration and the departments, including finance, to better understand and make sure everything's congruent and the policies, once a policy's approved by council. Next, based on the survey of council, as well as both mandatory council meetings, their work, and optional meetings in the councillor position, we found that more time is spent than a part-time position, as well, things like the deputy mayor role, in which there's no current compensation for this additional time and responsibility. Looked at a few other communities that use a formula, and in this case, 55% was used by, for example, Red Deer, to compensate council for more than a part-time position of 24 hours, sorry, 25 hours, which can be typical, but from what we understand, there are peaks for council throughout the year, times like budget and conference times where it can get up to 40-plus hours. We felt that this formula helps better compensate for that, as well as simplify the process for future remuneration committees. They now can focus on the mayor remuneration and other compensation parts and make sure that they fit with the other peer communities. Another point in regard to compensation was the need for CPI, and we felt that this was important, and using this Alberta CPI formula to keep our mayor and councillors relevant and fairly compensated, as well as attract anyone considering running for council in the future. The CPI amount changes yearly, but it's necessary to use this, and it's used by most municipalities in Alberta as a way of increasing compensation to fit budgets and make sure that we're all fairly compensated. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe you've received the report, and I'm sure there's questions, and I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thanks for your presentation, and again, thank you to the volunteers from our community who have taken the time to do this work and put it in front of council for consideration. I will first recognize councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you to the committee for doing work. I think it's so intensely awkward, council having set its own salary, and it has obvious problems, and I think that having advice from third-party residents who don't have personal skin in the game other than being taxpayers is so important. So, thank you for the work all of you put into this, I appreciate it. I've got questions along two lines of reasoning. One is, I'm just looking at the table about how much time is expected of a council member, and something I don't notice as an individual line item there is there is significant time preparing for meetings, reading agenda packages, et cetera. Was that counted in the time that you suggested we spend on council? And so, it's the prep time for a council meeting, is that included in that line item, or do you think that's outside the paid role of council?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, I understand that there's a lot of reading and prep for that, including a 37-page report for remuneration prior to a meeting. So, it doesn't surprise me. It's not listed in the current council estimates chart. That's why we took that optional time into consideration there as well. Again, not listed there, but I would say miscellaneous time commitments under there would possibly cover something like, you know, prepping for meetings and such.
Go ahead, councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, no, I appreciate that. Another question I had is, there are some municipalities that have policies around councils that have young children, whether that's parental leave, whether that's help with childcare. Was that a discussion at all at committee?
Great question. Yes, it was. It's something that this committee didn't feel we were educated enough, or there has been enough work done. There is a community that is looking at that right now, and it's going to be a whole thing that's going to have to be tackled by council at one point in time. I think it's something that you will have to deal with. At this point, no, we decided not to put that in our report. I think there's some things that have to be done, because it falls under provincial legislation that's going to have to be followed there, and I don't think we were capable of making any recommendations in regard to that, because I think, unfortunately, it's out of our wheelhouse, and I honestly believe there needs to be some work done with the provincial government, from municipal fairs, that'll tackle that and make some recommendations there.
Go ahead, councillor Bressi.
My understanding of the MGA is that it does allow council to create policies around maternity, paternity leave if it wants, but are you suggesting that you did some research that suggests that might not be adequate, or you just didn't have time to unpack it?
Yeah, it's going to be a big thing to unpack, for sure. I will say this, I mean, council has dealt with it in the past with bereavement. I think you'll have to deal with this at one point, and it may be a one-off basis. As far as the time commitment and how much leave a person can have without an election coming up, that kind of thing, I don't know. It's going to be a big thing to unpack, and I don't, we have no recommendation for it at this time.
If I may, one more.
Go for it.
I'm wondering, so, I am intending to make a motion in this meeting to ask council to figure out how to do some research, and I would like to start that conversation. Would your hope or the committee's hope be, if I make a motion like that, if my colleagues support it, I'm not going to argue it now, I'll argue when I make the motion.
Right.
I'll support doing work to explore that. Would your recommendation be ask you folks to do more work, or would it be to ask other processes? I guess I'm asking, are you prepared to do a bit more work if council asks you, or are you hoping to be done your work?
I'd have to ask my fellow members. It might be something that Legislative Services takes a look at with other communities and what current municipal act says, but if asked, I guess we would have to see if the committee's willing to do additional work. I would start there, yeah. Thank you.
Other than the fact that I appreciate your questions, councillor Bressi, you were the only one in the queues, so I was happy to go with your questions. I will give council one last chance and check online to see if councillor O'Connor had any questions in regards to the report that was presented, and seeing none, I will look to business arising and recognize councillor Bressi.
Yeah, I wasn't the queue, so I'm ready to make motions, I suppose, if the mayor wants. I guess, one, to start, really, to start with a small one, I don't know if we need an actual motion for this, but it's a small, just a little detail, but in 16.1, the proposed policy talks about membership on boards that the city pays the expenses versus one that the other organization pays it. And Alberta municipalities, which I serve on the board of, was mentioned there, and I just want to clarify that Alberta municipalities, AB Munis pays all expenses. That's not a board that the city pays any expense whatsoever for, so I would love to see that changed. Maybe the Federation Canadian Municipalities would be an appropriate change there. I don't know if we need a formal motion, or if it's just me flagging it here as adequate.
I'll check with Ms. Hanson in regards to that change on 16.1. Would you prefer a motion, or can we treat it as housekeeping?
Through the mayor to councillor Bressi, the recommendation coming forward is to direct administration to bring the policy back for council consideration, so those amendments could be included when that policy comes back for formal review.
You're good?
Yep.
Councillor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. My question, and I guess I'm just hearing Legislative Services saying that this policy's going to come back, the remuneration policy's going to come back in a separate meeting for approval. One of the comments that I guess are concerns I have is when I look at 11.4.1, events that occur at greater expense and $2,000 shall require a brief summary, and I guess for me, I've been saying that for a while. I really feel we need to be doing more than a brief summary on $2,000 of expenses. I guess I envision us more going to a full report that goes into our council agenda as part of our package. And for me, I just, I think we, as an organization, love to think we have staff going off to conferences and everything. I think there needs to be a higher level of accountability on council when we're going to spend $2,000 on a single event. I think we've all went to a conference in our term that we're got back when, ah, I don't know if there was great value there, and yet, we'll send somebody to that same conference a year after, and so I...
They may choose to go.
True, they may choose to go, but I guess, for me, after all, when I've heard colleagues make comments about certain conferences, and people are still choosing to go to them, that concerns me a little bit, and I don't know how we'd ever stop that people have their own choice, but I don't like that we have no accountability to having that on record, saying, I don't think that this is a good conference, good value, or what was great about it. But I think as an organization, it's our job to be better stewards of, we're spending $2,000 or more of the community's money. We need to do more than a verbal, hey, I went to a conference and talk about it at a roundtable. So, I'm not sure if that's something I would need to motion, or if that's something that administration can hear and maybe bring back. I'm not sure if there's support from council, but I know, I've been kind of asking that for a while, and now that this policy's in front of me, I'd like to see that changed or updated. So, I'm not sure, Mayor Clayton, if I need to make a motion, or if that's more of when this policy comes back, wait till then, and it may be in my comments now, or what would be the process for that.
So, a couple things, a couple comments. First of all, as council is given a discretionary fund, how they choose to do their own professional development is their own choice, and if you yourself didn't find a certain conference of value, that is your interpretation, and other people may choose to continue to go to that conference in a different year. Don't really know if it's fair for you to evaluate what an individual takes as professional development for their own use. So, however, there is currently a process that council is expected to fill out a report. That report is in the council chambers, it's been there for a couple of years now. If you would like to see more than the existing report, I think that that's a fair conversation. I will ask the CAO in regards to work that's currently being done in expectations for onboarding council's commitment, expectations with external committees, et cetera, and I understand there is an item that's coming forward to the appropriate standing committee in the near future.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So, it's related, not exactly in line with conferences, but we have been doing some work on reporting of external committees and the activity that can be reported from that. That might be a great place to have this discussion, whether this is a tack-on to that process that we're going to bring forward, something that's straightforward, that isn't an administrative burden, but that will provide some more relevant info on the external committee side of things, that I think could be extrapolated into conferences and be a model for that as well. And that's within, it's probably close to the organizational meeting that we'll bring that forward, so this fall here, so.
Next week's.
Okay, so just the process, we better. And I guess the only concern is it just has a brief summary, so to me, I'd like to have a little bit more teeth on what that means. Am I doing a two-minute roundtable, that's my brief summary, or am I napkin drawing something for a brief summary?
I guess you're going to have a definition, interpretation of the word brief could mean different things.
Yeah, so that's where I, I guess, I've always wanted more teeth around that, so if that's coming back for a future conversation, that'd be great.
Perfect. Thanks for that, councillor Platt. Councillor Blackmore.
My comment was, I'm not sure what councillor Platt is asking for is actually connected to a remuneration review. I think it's more of an action item for council.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you want someone to actually make the motion, so we can do the business?
I am looking for some business arising, but I'll just recognize councillor O'Toole first, because he may have a question for administration.
Oh, I was just going to go in, if there was no more questions.
Go ahead, councillor Blackmore.
I would move that committee recommend council receive the Council Remuneration Review Report 2024 for information, and acknowledge that the Council Remuneration Review Committee has completed its ad hoc role as required. Number two, approve the recommendations in the Council Remuneration Review Report 2024 as presented, and three, direct administration to consolidate council policy 100, being the council remuneration and expense reimbursement policy, and council procedure 100-1 into a single streamlined council policy 100, and I expect that my fellow members would like that split.
Yes. So, we will, so thank you for acknowledging, we will split those items, recognizing councillor Bressi. So, those motions are in order, split, and then I'll recognize councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just want to check with the chair, as I said, do you want to make a motion, asking some more work about investigating childcare options? I think it'd be most appropriate to do that as a subsequent motion, not an amendment.
Yeah, I agree. Perfect, thank you. I had a question in regards to the third portion, the splitting. Sorry, now, in my details, it's gone. Hang on, I'll go to the staff report in a second. I'll ask my questions when we get to that third item. Councillor Blackmore, sorry, questions, comments, consideration, discussion, debate on the first breakout portion of the motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question on item number one of the main motion. Sorry, go ahead, councillor O'Connor.
Councillor O'Connor, in favor.
Thank you for that. That carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore has read all of the motions, so we're on item number two, as broke out separately. Discussion, debate on item number two, recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just want to thank the four members of the committee. This is an awkward thing, setting a salary, although, again, it is for the next term, not this term, but they're four well-respected members of the community, and I happily accept whatever they put forward, so thanks to the committee.
All right, thanks for that. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on item number two.
Councillor O'Connor, in favor.
Councillor O'Connor votes in favor, and that carries unanimously. Moving to item number three, I did have a question for Ms. Hanson in regards to amalgamation of the policy and the procedure, that's a little bit different than we do many of the pieces. Was there any legislative concerns in regards to combining the procedure and the policy?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No concerns from combining them. We have combined procedure and policy into one policy document in the past, and where we're able to streamline a policy and make it a little more seamless, and we've recommended that.
Perfect. Okay, it's good with legislative services, I'm good. I see no one else in the queue, so I'll call the question on item number three.
Councillor O'Connor, in favor, and I just had a comment after.
Councillor O'Connor votes in favor, and I'll recognize you in one moment, councillor O'Connor. Councillor O'Connor, there is some other business arising, can it wait, or was it in regards to the first three items that were previously voted on?
Yes, I also felt that this was a very well put-together report. It makes it very easy for us to go ahead, knowing that the community has put the rise on it and spent a lot of work on it, so kudos to the community.
All right, thanks for your comments. Moving on to other business, recognizing councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. As indicated, I do have another motion. I'm going to, if this motion passes, it would give direction only to administration, but my hope would be that administration would involve the committee to the extent it's willing to be involved, but I don't want to put the committee on the spot right now by making a motion, asking them to do something. But that is, I would move that committee direct administration to bring forward options for councillors to obtain parental leave. And just to speak to this, last election, I could be wrong, but I believe I was the second youngest candidate, and I know that I was certainly above the median age of Grand Prairie residents, and I believe the youngest candidate was above the median age, too. Also, I've got the youngest of any children on council. I also think I had the youngest of any children who were in the race last time, and my children now, my youngest is 10. I don't think that we've done a successful job of attracting younger candidates to this council table. I really think that's too bad. I think if we don't have people who are about to be parents, or are parents of very young children, then we're not truly reflecting the entire community at this table. It's a full disclosure, I don't know if I'm running for council again, but I certainly know I'm not having children again. So, if we did have parental leave, this is something that would not benefit me, and I couldn't be surprised, but I don't think it would benefit anybody around this current table, but I hope that that would encourage younger candidates who are thinking, I don't know what's going on in the next four years of my family life, but no, I've got security that if I have kids, I could take a couple months to focus on my family, do what I need to do, because parents are the most important role we have in this community, and we should be allowing councillors to be both councillors and brand-new parents. So, for us, I would love us to explore what that would look like, so I hope the council will support this motion.
All right, so that motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate, recognizing councillor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Actually, happy to support the motion. I'm just wondering if it would be a friendly amendment, I almost wonder if we should be talking about a bereavement within this as well. So, I don't know if it's a secondary motion, or if you're okay with adding a bereavement in there, so we can send administration away with that as well.
And I'd be very happy to accept that as a friendly, if councillor Platt's willing to make it friendly.
Okay.
All right. So, everybody's friends, we have an amended motion, recognizing councillor Teason.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it. Actually, appreciate the motion, too. Councillor Platt, just a question in regards to bereavement. Are we just talking about death, or are we talking illness as well? On our last term on council, we had Clyde Blackburn, you know, we had to make a special motion in council in order to allow him not to be removed from council, so typically, bereavement means loss of something. But the loss of your health and trying to get back to health again is something that we should consider, and there's mechanisms that we've already employed for council, but just curious if bereavement also includes illness and sick leave.
Councillor Platt.
Yeah, to me, I guess, sorry, you're absolutely correct, my councillor Teason, to me, that would include that, but I guess we probably maybe want to give more clarification on a friendly friendly maybe on that as well.
You're good? You're good? Okay. Anything further, councillor Teason, before I move on? Councillor Blackmore.
To me, bereavement leave refers entirely to someone who, someone who has lost someone, not someone who has died, and I think for someone who is ill and needs a leave from council, a sick leave, I think that's already dealt with in the MGA. Yeah.
Yeah, it's how we handle.
And you're always going to be looking at that as a specific instant, so I, you know, you can add it in if you want, but to me, bereavement and sick leave are not the same thing at all.
Bereavement isn't in there, but illness and sick leave currently is addressed, but yeah. So, up to the mover of the motion, would you like to leave them in as a friendly amendment?
Sorry, yeah, I believe that's me.
You, sorry. I apologize.
No, for me, I appreciate where councillor Teason's going, but I think I'm okay, illness and sickness, relying on coming to council and asking for approval. I do think parental and bereavement, taking care of your family, is different than taking care of yourself in some ways, I just think they're different. I'm not saying I disagree that we should have sickness, illness, but I just think they're different, so no, I wouldn't take that, the sickness and illness side, as a friendly amendment.
All right. So, the originally amended motion stands to bring forward options for councillors to obtain parental leave and bereavement leave. I'm just going to chime and jump in the queue, appreciate this motion. I know that some of my colleagues, in particular Sylvan Lake, has a parental leave policy that I think, because they were dealing with exactly that of a councillor who was carrying a child during the term. So, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I'll go to councillor Bressi to close, if you wish. Seeing nothing, I will call the question. Please vote. Councillor O'Connor, how do you vote?
Councillor O'Connor, in favor.
Thanks, councillor O'Connor. Councillor O'Connor votes in favor, that carries unanimously. And again, Mr. Pollack, thank you for your time, thank you to your committee for their time and your work, and your commitment to our community in this council, truly appreciate it. Moving on to item 3.2 in our agenda, a verbal update on our advocacy priorities. I'll give Mr. Tarrant a chance to get set up, and we will move into that. First, being on the verbal update, 3.2.1, Alberta municipalities, as council recalls, we are going to Red Deer, which is not the traditional Edmonton Calgary, but this year, Red Deer is very happy to host the Alberta municipalities' AGM. With that, I know a reminder, council, there is an item in your mailbox from Mr. Tarrant with some information, and Mr. Tarrant also has an additional verbal update.
Thank you, and through the chair, you know, as indicated, each year, the Alberta municipalities seek submissions from different municipalities across the province, looking for resolutions that will be presented at the annual conference that happens each year in the fall. The resolutions are made publicly, they're available on website, and anybody can go and view the resolutions that will be debated at the conference. So, with that, looking at, we've reviewed all the resolutions and looked at them in light of council's advocacy priorities and other strategic priorities, and looked at a selected number of them that we will speak about today. You know, certainly, there is, you know, lots that we can find some applicability to the city, but I'll focus on, I think I have about seven here, that we can go through. So, the first one I'll start with is Resolution B2, it's the Automated Vote Counting Systems Resolution. This, their ask for this resolution is that we would, that the government would revert the elements of Bill 20, which allows, to allow municipalities to use electronic vote tabulators. As you may recall, in the Bill 20 legislation that came out earlier this year, there was a change that is, would remove municipalities' ability to use automatic vote counting systems, which the city does employ during elections time. This change would result in addition... This change would result in additional staffing and costs to the city, as well as a delay in election results, and so the resolution is requesting that the government revert to the original legislation that would allow us to continue those. Would you like me to pause?
I do have Counselor Berg with a question.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So just curious, have you, has administration factored out how long they suspect it would take to hand-count the ballots versus the machine?
Through the chair, I don't have that information right now.
So I can say that, based on my Midside City Mayor's executive call today, that is an item through Midside City Mayor's caucus, that they tend to, or plan to support a resolution that is coming forward for changes, but it was really a high-level conversation at this point, and we're waiting for the regulations to have further discussion on, on that item in particular.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. If you want to continue.
Next one I'll draw attention to is Resolution B3, which is the Provincial Education Property Tax Resolution, and this one is requesting that the province review how much is collected in the education property tax through municipalities each year, and evaluate that based on how much, sorry, contrast it with how much is given to municipalities through infrastructure funding. This came to, came from a couple places. One, with the mandate letter to municipal affairs, the premier had requested that the minister look at having some of those education property tax dollars being given back to municipalities, and, and so to, to our knowledge, nothing has been done on that front. The premier also had some comments regarding the infrastructure, regarding the education property tax, and that, she said that it was, you know, there's, there is more given back to municipalities than are taken out from that tax. An analysis through AB Minis has shown that that's not, not quite the case. I just wanted to provide some context in, for the city, the province collects about $30 million each year in education property taxes from the City of Grand Prairie residents, but we've received, in terms of infrastructure funding, from the local government funding framework, LGFF, this year we've received about $9 million. So if we're looking at that as a measure, there is a, you know, there is a net deficit there. So what this resolution is asking is that there be this analysis done, and that the minister's mandate letter be looked at, and that we, the province look at reverting or giving back some of that education property tax, or possibly some of that tax room to municipalities.
Keep going.
All right. The next one, draw your attention to, is B4, it's the G-POT Resolution, so this is Grants in Place of Taxes. So these are funds that we get from the province regarding any provincial properties that are within the municipality's boundaries. The province did cut the funding back in 2019 quite substantially. We used to receive about half a million dollars in a year in G-POT funding, we're now down to about $250,000, so about half of that. So the, this fund, this resolution is asking for that funding to be restored. All right. Next one is B6, the FCSS Funding, Funding Increase. So between 2015 and 2023, the budget for FCSS was essentially flatlined, about $100 million a year for the province. There was a small increase in 2023 of $5 million. Of, of the, you know, 105 million, the city receives about 1.4 million a year, which has essentially been flatlined over the last 10 years, and so this resolution is requesting an increase to, to the overall pot available. All right. Next one I'll go to is B10, it's the city's resolution, so that was presented to council earlier this year, which speaks to asking the province to have a standard of service for emergency social services, for when there is an emergency and a municipality assists in taking evacuees, that there would be a standard across the province in terms of which costs are actually covered, and so that municipalities have some certainty going in, when, when they do accept evacuees, knowing exactly what costs are going to be covered through. And so we will be presenting on that. The next one is the B12, Permanent Supportive Housing. So this falls within one of council's advocacy priorities, funding for housing. This one particularly is targeted towards, you know, the permanent supportive housing, and making additional capital and operating funds available for, for permanent supportive housing. The final one I'll draw attention to was B14, it's the Attraction and Retention Strategy for Rural Healthcare Professionals. This one, I sit on the Alberta Municipal Governance Committee, and we review all the resolutions. This one did generate a lot of conversation, being that the government does have the Rural Health Professions Action Plan, or RPAP, that has seen quite significant investment in the last number of years by, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, and, you know, felt that there is an action plan in place, and there has been actioned quite substantially. There are quite large relocation bonuses for rural Alberta, which are accessible to professional, health professionals relocating to Grand Prairie and area, but, so felt that maybe the, the resolution was a bit redundant. However, it, you know, might be good to still pass to indicate there is still strong support for continuing that advocacy. That's it. All right, with that, I can move into just some updates on our advocacy items. That works? All right. So just a few updates on council's advocacy priorities. On electricity distribution, we heard some potentially good news this summer from the Minister of Utilities and Affordability when he was up in Grand Prairie, Minister Nudorf. He let us know that there has been some legislation drawn up that would change distribution within the province to make it more equalized, and that the expectation is that it will be introduced in the spring legislature. So we are continuing to push for that. We're actually hopeful and pushing that maybe that would be moved up and could possibly be in this fall legislature, but, but if, you know, at the latest, that it would be in, actually introduced in the spring. We are going to be hosting just a small gathering, which we'll get invite for shortly, at AB Minis in a few weeks. We will be having representatives from communities from many of the ACO, largest communities within the ACO Service Area, just to reiterate to them the importance of talking to their MLAs and ensuring that caucus, the UCP Caucus is fully aware and supportive of moving this legislation forward. That, I'll move on to healthcare supports. That one there, one of the items that we have under that particular item is the cardiac care center for the hospital. Had a recent conversation with the Hospital Foundation there, very soon this fall, they're going to be launching a fairly big campaign to start building out the catheterization lab at the hospital, and will certainly be taking any resources they have and echoing their, their advocacy on, on that, on that file. The next one is NWP and support there. Again, had a good conversation with their VP Cindy Park the other day, just looking at some of the items that we had included in their NWP advocacy. Their major one right now, which you may have seen, and that launched in the last couple weeks, is funding for new trades building, buildings in Grand Prairie and Fairview, so a total ask of $157 million that would expand the trades programming available. It's one of the, if not the most significant trades expansion in the institution's history, and so we'll continue to echo their advocacy with Mass Education and push forward for those, those buildings. And if you get a chance, they have some great materials available online that gives a little more of the scope of those, those trades programming.
This morning, I put the marketing material from that advocacy item in council's mailbox, as well as a document from President Vanessa, after following my meeting with her yesterday.
Correct. Next one is housing, continue to push on that. You know, one of the things that we indicated with the provincial budget earlier this year was that they had increased funding for, you know, particularly affordable housing quite substantially, but it was over a three-year period, and a lot of that funding was backended. So we'll be pushing for that and watching for next year's budget, which if their projections continue to carry out, should see a big increase for the upcoming two budgets. Also on that, we are prepared, as indicated at a previous meeting, to apply for the half funding, and that application will be going in tomorrow. The next one is rail, so there's been lots of happening on the, on the rail front. You may have seen, there was a potential strike action that was going to occur several weeks ago. The Community Rail Advocacy Alliance was very active in writing letters to different federal ministers and the prime minister, deputy prime minister, indicating our, our support for government action to ensure that rail would keep on moving. We are very pleased to see that that was, was taken into account, and we were one of the many voices that was being added to that, and the strike action was, was averted, and rail continues to, to go, and so we'll continue to work on that. Also continue to work with getting a meeting with the Federal Transport Minister to relay the concerns. I'll move on to, the next one is automatic, automated traffic enforcement. We, you, there was, may have seen in the news, and through a letter we received, the Ministry of Transportation and Economic Corridors is moving forward with legislation that will be introduced in December, or sorry, regulation that will be introduced in December. It's looking like the program will be curtailed significantly, only allowing ATE to be used on, in construction zones and playground zones, and, you know, very limited other uses, which, for a lot of communities, that sees it as a, as a tool in the toolbox for traffic enforcement. It does have a significant impact and will mean for a greater reliance on conventional enforcement, which does increase the, the safety factor. So with that, we continue letter-writing campaigns, continue to, you know, work with not only our officials in the Department of Transportation, Economic Corridors, but also in Public Safety and Municipal Affairs, and trying to get as many voices as possible showing that this will be a detriment to, to safety if the regulations continue as we, they've been indicated they would. The final one, I do have, it was on the Biometric Scanning Center. We do actually have some very recent news we just heard about. The, there, we met with Prairie Scan, was up here, some of their lead officials during the Growing the North Conference, so we explained to them some of the advocacy priorities, and this was one that they said that, you know, they felt they had, they worked very closely with Service Alberta and with Employment Social Services Canada, and were able to speak on, you know, maybe make some connections on our behalf, and we just indicated that they, they have put in, let me pull it up right now, a request for consideration into Service Canada's upcoming action plan, and so we're hopeful that it's in a queue for consideration there. We'll continue our advocacy, though, with the, the federal department that oversees Service Canada, as well as the Minister of Immigration, as we feel that it's still an important asset for our community that we need to, need to have, have here. So we'll continue to keep that updated and, but, but it looks like some, some positive progress on that one. With that, that's the end of the advocacy update.
All right. Seeing no one in the queue, I appreciate your update and the information provided as we prepare for Alberta municipalities. Moving on to item 3.4, the proposed cricket location. I'll give Mr. Tarrant a second. Are you presenting on this?
No, if I may, there's just one more update on the grant.
Oh, my apologies. Item 3.3, skipped over that. Item 3.3, the grant update. Mr. Tarrant?
Thank you, and this will be a quick one, so just taking this time to indicate a couple of the grants that have been applied for since we last gave an update in July. So since then, there was two bigger grants that were applied for. One is through FCM's Growing Canada's Community Campus Program. So this one is to plant trees throughout city parks and boulevards, so we've applied for $125,000 through that, that one. The next one is the Community Support Fund. It's a provincial fund that is available for advancing Indigenous relations and truth and reconciliation initiatives, and so we've applied for that one. We've applied for about $560,000 over three years. What we've applied for is working with the Grand Prairie Police Service to hire an Indigenous Relations Advisor and develop cultural awareness and trauma-informed police training program with an Indigenous lens, and so that, that application has been put in, and again, that's $560,000 over, over three years. And that's the end of the grant.
All right. Thanks for your update.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3.4, the proposed cricket location. It is in your package with a couple maps, as well as a staff report. I'll give Ms. Buberdorff and Ms. Patterson a second to get set up, and whenever you're ready, ladies, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So in July 2023, administration was directed to review safety concerns about the batting cages located in the North Ridge location, and a subsequent report came to committee in January 2024 with a further motion to report on relocating the batting cage to other locations in the park. In June 2024, a report outlining the relocation options within the current park, as well as relocation of the entire cricket field to an alternate location was presented, as well as additional requests from the cricket club related to equipment. Today, we're here to report back on the relocation options, as well as the cost of equipment requested by the club.
Following council's direction, administration explored two possible options for consideration. The first is relocating the practice pitch on the current cricket grounds. In consultation with our engineering department, we have identified two potential locations for relocating the practice pitch at Head and Salmon Park. This is outlined in this map. After careful consideration of the findings, we recommend alternate location number two. This location is optimal, as it is situated away from residential areas with only a storage facility nearby. The second option is relocating the entire cricket grounds to a new location. When selecting a new location for a cricket pitch, it is important to ensure the space is nearly twice the size of a soccer field, to accommodate both the main field and the outfield. The playing area must be level to maintain a consistent and safe surface for the players, and the pitch should be orientated in a north-south, north-south direction. Additionally, adequate parking must be available for players and spectators. An example of a suitable location can be found in Signature Falls, which is shown here on map number two. To date, the city has invested $40,000 into the existing cricket grounds at Head and Salmon Park. In June of this year, the cricket club presented as a delegation and requested additional equipment, including a portable score clock estimated at $10,000, and two dugouts estimated at $20,000. The club also has sight screens at the current location, which could be relocated to a proposed new site. Given these considerations, administration recommends that committee recommend council refer the relocation of the cricket grounds and purchase of equipment in the amount up to $150,000 to the 2025 budget deliberations. With that, we conclude our report, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. It's been a few decades since I played cricket, and it was just out in a field at random. Has the Cricket Association expressed a preference as to which location they would like?
In speaking with the cricket club, who is here today, and I can have them speak to that as well, but they have asked for additional space as well, so I think they're looking for the cricket home. So they're looking for a space where they can grow and expand.
expand and add more teams. So I'm not sure. I think they've said that at their current location, they're not able to expand, whereas a new location is given the opportunity to grow with the club.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore. Sorry, just for information, counsel, there's a recommended motion in there, but can you remind me how many members the cricket club currently has?
At last report, it was over 80 members. I'm just gonna look.
So for those watching online, it was indicated that there's 85 to 90 members with opportunity for growth. Recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'm looking at the proposed cricket pitch over in Signature Falls and there's a recommendation that there should be parking. How would that be introduced into this location?
So we've actually reached out to the Grand Prairie Catholic School Division in conversation about the pitch location as well as parking at their facility. As the cricket is played predominantly on evenings, weekends, this shouldn't interfere with parking at the school division. So there is the parking at the Mother Teresa School, as well as just above the school, there's a little turnaround area that they can park there, as well as street parking in front.
Okay. I got a second question. So if it goes to budget and this is going to be built, what's gonna happen with the one in Solomon?
Thank you for the question.
I'll try to jump in on that one. I think we would work with the cricket club to see if that was a location they still want to use for alternate programs. If not, we could look at using it as another rentable space for soccer or other activities.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Pressley.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Looking at the proposed Signature Falls location, the land around that, is that privately held land that'll be developed eventually?
Thank you for the question. Yes, it is.
And how confident are we that when houses do get built in the future, if this were the pitch was, that balls would stay where balls should have, are supposed to be and not be hitting houses?
Ms. Patterson.
Thank you for the question through the mayor. Yes. So of course, safety is very important. So we would look at implementing safety measures if that was a requirement at that time.
Have there been any conversations with the landowner of that property who would eventually hopefully develop that?
Thank you for the question. No, there has been no conversation with the property owner.
Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do have two questions. One is, what are the size comparisons between Signature Falls and the Solomon Park? For the pitch itself, not for the other extraneous stuff?
Yes, thank you for the question. We'll just bring that map up again. Oh, sorry. You'll see that they're very similar in size. So you'll see the proposed cricket diameter as well as what is currently at Head and Salmon Park. So, one more.
I would say it's about double the size at the Signature Falls location. It's hard to see because the first option is a storm pond. So it's got, yeah, it's got hillside hills on the side, but it's about double the size. So two soccer fields equivalent.
And should this be forwarded to budget, would the soccer club be able to participate in relocation costs at some level, any level?
Thank you. Cricket club, I assume. You mean not soccer?
I'm sorry, did I say soccer?
Yeah. That's, I thought you meant cricket. I thought I better double check.
That's why you're looking confused. Okay, I apologize. Cricket.
I'm just gonna look to our colleagues at the back.
Sorry, sir. I'm just gonna get you to come on up. If you're not in the microphone, those who are watching won't hear you.
No, I mean, this is, like, this is our home. This is our cricket ground. We have invested a lot. Now, this relocation is really forced upon us by the neighbors. We are quite happy there. We just worry about the safety issue, but we are happy there. We would like to expand. We would like, we have a few more things, you know, that we'd like to develop there. But a new location does provide a lot more growth opportunities for us, but we would think that would be unfair to contribute again. We have invested a lot of time and money. We have gone to a lot of people for donations. We would contribute what we can, but for the infrastructure, what we have, if you're moving out of there, you know, we...
And I am not suggesting that you're required to. But it certainly increases your likelihood of finding some solution in budget if there's participation. But you're not required to. I understand you've already bought lots of items and I think that the majority of those can be moved to the new site. So that still is a contribution.
Like pitch or the matting or, you know, everything has to be new. Now, we cannot just dig it up and take it there. But we, for ground infrastructure, I think that what's going there has got to be, again, new. We would contribute what we can, but this has taken 12, 13 years of hard work to build what we have accomplished there. We, I'd have to take to my board what they're willing to.
Okay. You've answered the question, so that's good. Thank you.
Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just kind of in that same vein, I just want to get clarification. So if we were to go ahead and budget and said we're gonna go to Signature Falls, would the items that are currently at Salmon Field be moved? The cages and the items that have been bought and paid for through either the city or the association be moved to this location?
Thank you for the question. Yes. Most of the structures would be able to be moved, such as sight screen, the cage, things of that nature. The only things left behind are the concrete cement, things that we can't move.
And just reading in the report, appreciate that, you know, it's gonna come to budget, but are we planning on, I'm not seeing the word trees in there anywhere. So is this just, we're gonna get it ready, but there's not a tree planted on the site? I'm not seeing, it says landscaping. So is there trees within the landscaping component of it or?
Ms. Patterson.
Thank you for the question. At this time, landscaping, trees and other elements have not been included in that. This is just for leveling, general seating, just to make sure that it's a flat, surface-level area with some turf.
Okay. So I'm just, I guess from my own knowledge, I'm just curious if this wasn't a city-led project and a proponent come in and did the same thing, would we require landscaping from them that would include trees?
Ms. Patterson, or I will actually go to Chief Glavin on that.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd have to check with development permitting. It wouldn't be, it's not a typical private sector type development here. I'm not sure if we would require landscaping or not. Hope we can get that answered.
I guess, and I can maybe ask and maybe make it into subsequent motion. For me, it's important that there's trees, that we do these facilities and we have one level of standard for industry. And then when the city seems to be involved with stuff, we don't seem to do the same level of expectation. Appreciate industry's probably not doing this, but it's, I go back to our rotary fields and the soccer fields way back in the day. If we would have planted trees around that facility when it was built 40, 50 years ago, it'd be beautiful today. And my fear with this is that there's no trees in this plan. Appreciate it's coming to budget, but I'm just wondering if there's a subsequent motion I should ask where administration do some homework on what would it look like to do proper trees if this was a third-party application, not just a city-led application? What would be the requirements? Because I feel like if we're gonna require industry to do stuff, we should hold ourselves to the same standard of that. So I'm not sure if I need to make a motion or if that's just something I can discuss at budget or to give administration a heads up. That would be something I'd be looking to add trees as well into this.
Mr. Burke.
Maybe if I could just probe just a little bit whether it was to expectations or would an option be for us to have an optional tree package? Like, so if this was to go forward, it would be here's the base amount. And here it would be if we were to enhance landscaping and to be more useful. Would that be more useful at budget, I guess would be my question? If so, a motion for us to bring an optional package with?
I guess for me, that would be something I would love to debate with my colleagues around. If we're doing this, let's do it 100% right. So there's trees and there's screening in the future for it, not build a pitch, get the grass, get the landscaping looking good, and then five years later go, let's plant trees and distribute all that. So for me, it would be great to see it as a second item. So I'm happy to make that motion if it needs that.
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm thinking of other soccer areas, et cetera, you know, that are municipally owned. We don't necessarily have significant landscaping because it gets in the way of play, right? So I just, yeah.
I think if you went to most organizations around those, they would probably disagree and wish there was some levels of trees. There's no shelter in the, so if you get a 40 or 30-degree day, there's not a tree to park a kid under for shelter or screening. There's also not rain. So I've been, you know, going to a lot of sports facilities around the province. I feel like our facilities generally lack trees near them.
Definitely at ball diamonds, you don't want them at all. So maybe at soccer. So it'd be worth, I mean, happy when we get to the business for you to add another item.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I had a question and all those conversations, it slipped through my head. So I'm gonna just pass on this one and maybe it'll pop back in.
Not a problem. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I just chimed in because Counselor Platt's tree appeal. I'm all in favor of the trees. I don't think you need to argue, I need to argue too much as to why. But especially for this site, I think another consideration that needs to be made is, I used to live in this area. I lived in the Willbrook Apartments, not too far off from here. So this was quite a favorite spot for me to go hiking and many people in the neighborhood do go hiking. One of the first thoughts of the site that I had months ago was, we might need a fence. Because if you look at the site, on the very north side of the proposed cricket pitch, there's a trail. It's actually a dirt trail. And if you go on Google Maps, you can stretch it and you can see how far this trail goes. It actually, there's a little reservoir there where some beavers hang out and muskrats, all that stuff. But people walk around here all the time and then their trail back after they get to 84th and turn around, unless they're going deeper into Signature Falls, is to come up on the inside, the southern part of this little channel here. I think it's called the Woody Channel. Anyways, I can see potential safety hazards running along the northern line of that cricket pitch field. Cricket balls are not soccer balls. They're hardwood balls and somebody not paying attention, walking along that path, might just get clocked with a cricket ball. So I think Counselor Platt not only brings up a good point to plant trees for aesthetics and the environment, but in this case, with this pitch, I'm thinking especially on the north side of this field, trees would actually enhance safety over there as well and provide shade. The other part of it is, it's just another comment with the trees. When you look at the Mother Teresa School compared to the old site, parents always have a sightline to the park to where their kids are. Here, there's a small park in the rear of a Mother Teresa and there's a bigger, more fun park on the other side of Mother Teresa as well. So it's hard to have those same sightlines. So if kids are going to the park to catch shade or to go play, I feel like the parents won't have that same sight visibility. So again, trees, which are just a natural place for kids to hang out and have fun in and around the site, is probably a really good idea and I'll support it when the motion comes forward. But it's a good consideration. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Counselor Teason. Recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My concern is uprooting the cricket pitch to the new location. And all we're trying to do in the original was to move the batting cage. And because of how tight our budget is, I'm really concerned that this may delay things. But I think going ahead with, you know, the ask that they had on moving that batting cage and option number two, I think is a really good solution. It sounded like the group that, the gentleman came from the Cricket Association, they spent a lot of money building the cricket pitch. And I don't know if we have it in our budget to move it. So I'm concerned about not being able to solve the issue, which is the batting cage in the wrong location. So I'm not sure if I'm in favor of moving the whole thing.
Thanks for your comments, Counselor Connor. Counselor O'Toole.
Hey, I remembered. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. One of the concerns that when the public came to consult with their concerns about the cricket pitch where it's at at present location was noise. Is there, do you feel as administration that this area would be a suitable location with the potential of noise being created again from the batting?
Which location before?
The...
Solomon Park or the movement on the existing?
On the, no, no, on the Signature Falls area.
Ms. Patterson.
Thank you for the question through the mayor. At this time, we don't foresee any issues with noise. Again, that area just south of the proposed pitch is undeveloped and appears to be, there's no process yet. It looks like it'll be undeveloped for a period of time here. Distance from the school, I don't believe that is an issue as well. And then surrounding, the surrounding neighborhoods that are currently in place, I don't believe would hear that noise from the cricket.
Thank you. Just when you're ready for business, I would be interested in making that motion.
Counselor O'Connor, your hand's still up. Did you have another question?
Just hang on. Yes. Gotta change screens. I use the microphone. I'm just concerned about our budget and moving everything. And we just wanted, the noise was coming from the batting cage and the batting cage only, not around the whole site. If I'm interrupting that, then okay, let's move it to the Signature Falls area. But I don't believe, if we ask the Cricket Association that's in the mood right now, would they prefer to stay where they are?
Ms. Patterson, in consultation with the user group, have they indicated they would prefer to stay where they are? I think that's what I heard, that they would prefer to stay where they are. And this was addressed as, as community members and adjacent neighbors brought up concerns of safety and noise. Correct?
Correct. Yes. Thank you for the question. I think, hearing from the club today, I think their preference is being where they are because they have built it up to where they want it to be. Having said that, recognizing that now they're limited to that growth in that area. Just to answer the question, yes, we've had feedback from some neighbors regarding noise, particularly around the batting cage. Just to note though, in checking with 311 and Access GP, no noise complaints have actually been filed at this time. So just something to note as well.
Not through 311, but there have been delegations in the chambers.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
All right. Counselor Blackmore.
If we consider leaving it, the soccer pitch at Solomon Park, is there room there to add the dugouts that are requested?
Ms. Patterson.
Thank you for the question. I believe so, but that would be a question that we can check with engineering and I think just to make sure that the space available can fit those dugouts in appropriate way. Yeah.
Thanks. I just wanted to clear, sorry, go ahead. Did you have something?
Nope.
I just wanted to clarify, your recommendation is that the conversation of moving, go to budget deliberation as there's a financial impact, but you're not indicating a preferred location?
That is correct. The preferred location would be Signature Falls. That's not identified in the report, but essentially, yes, that would be the recommendation.
Okay. Just so that it was clear. Thank you. Counselor O'Toole, you said you wanted to do business rising.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the committee refer the relocation of the cricket grounds and purchase of equipment in the amount of up to $150,000 to the 2015 budget deliberations.
2015?
2024. 2025, rather, so not 2015.
2025.
Okay, perfect. And if you could, would you take a friendly amendment to include the location of Signature Falls in that motion?
And note that the location would be Signature Falls.
Perfect. Okay, so that motion is in order. So that would go to budget deliberations of 2025 with the relocation of the grounds and purchasing of equipment being... with the relocation of the grounds and purchasing of equipment being debated in twenty twenty-five and being relocated in the Signature Falls area. Motion's in order. Open it for discussion or debate.
Can I comment again?
Uh, I'll come back to you after if there's others. Okay? Thanks. Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, Mayor Clayton, uh, my concern is, is that if we, we can certainly push this to budget deliberation, but right now they would like some capital for the existing location, which is a pair of those score clock, the dug, dugouts once built, having moved and, uh, and relocate the batting cage on the existing site, which is a lot less money. Does that have to go to budget deliberation? Because that's a total of ten, twenty, forty-one thousand dollars potentially.
Sorry, Councilor O'Connor, so I, I think your, your comment, um, it kind of cut out there at the begin, at the end. Was there a question or just an observation?
No, I, I'm, I'm saying, dude, because there's forty-one thousand dollars of ask for the current location, should that be going to budget deliberation?
Um, that could be a subsequent motion if you chose so, yes.
Okay. So I think it's really important that we talk to the Cricket Club and say, would you prefer to have this forty-one thousand go to the current location at Solomon Park? Or do they want us to look at a total relocation for a hundred and twenty thousand at Signature Falls?
So the current motion, Councilor O'Connor, that is on the table, is in order. If it's defeated, I would suggest you come back with a subsequent motion. Um, the Cricket Club is in the chambers and did indicate that they have spent time and money in the existing location. Um, and as recognized by administration, it's only here today because council asked administration to go away, do some work based on input from adjacent neighbors. So, um, your point is valid. I just, uh, right now we have an existing motion, which would be contrary to what you're saying.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, no worries. Councilor Plot.
Uh, thanks, okay. I'm just curious, the motion says up to a hundred and fifty thousand, but when I look on the Signature Falls consideration, it says it's approximately a hundred and twenty thousand in the report, so.
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, that doesn't include the proposed, uh, equipment that they requested, which would be the additional thirty thousand dollars. So that is the two dugouts and the score clock.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Seeing, uh, sorry, Councilor O'Connor, your hands up. Is that still or did you have a, another question? Okay, I see it down now. Thank you for that. Uh, Councilor O'Toole to close.
Yes, uh, I think this is, uh, better solution. Uh, it's, there's not a lot of residences in the area, but yet again, there's a school in the area which we could use for parking and, uh, you know, maybe school will start teaching cricket in the near future. Um, when the original cricket field was developed, Parks was able to, because of timing, absorb most of the costs of the, the pitch and anything else that needed to be done. Uh, originally, it was slated for two soccer fields in there. What they did was separated the soccer fields to a fair enough distance that we could put the pitch in there and that's where, so it, it didn't cost us a lot of money as a budget item. It was absorbed through their Parks budget. So just throwing that information out there. And, uh, with that, I think this is a great, uh, move forward in the cricket world in Grand Prairie. And, uh, thank you for the time to...
All right. So I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councilor Plot in favor?
Councilor O'Connor, how do you vote?
Hmm, uh, not in favor.
Councilor O'Connor votes opposed. And that is carried six to two. Uh, Councilor Plot.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Seeing that that, uh, motion was approved, um, I'd like to make a subsequent motion that we direct administration to come back at budget with what we would, what the budget would be to adequately tree that area. And I guess when I say adequately tree that area, if it was industry applying for that, for that much square footage of land, what would we expect industry to do for trees?
At a, so I guess the question for Mr. Glabber is the interpretation that you would bring back a report, um, indicating at a recreational asset, what the expectation would be for landscaping? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we'd probably take a little bit of creative license because, uh, the, if we were asking industry to do it, there probably wouldn't actually be that many trees on a site like this, um, to come in. And I think you'd probably undershoot what I think the expectation might be for how much you would need for an area this big to make it look meaningful and provide some shade. But we could do both. We could show what industry would, what we'd require industry to do and perhaps a larger, um, installation of trees that would have a more meaningful coverage of an area this size.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I can, I trusted Ben's gonna look at that both ways. So, yeah, that's fine.
Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, I know for me, it's always an interesting discussion, municipal versus industry requirements. And for me, I don't think industry ever would make just a giant green space. And for me, there's a big difference between a whole bunch of hard surface and buildings. Yeah, you need to build trees there. Green space, I don't know if I'd be so keen on if industry was just building all, just green space. I don't know if I'd be keen on requiring it to meet trees. So I will support this motion because I agree with you though in terms of, hey, the recreation facilities we have, like rotary fields, how incredible would those be if we would have planted trees twenty years ago? So I do think it is important to plant trees here, but to enhance a recreational asset, not because I think we'd make industry do the same thing. So happy to make the motion, but want you, just want to make that distinction of my opinion.
Councilor O'Toole.
Yes, I, uh, totally support that. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned, there's eighty-five members in the Cricket Club, but they also have tournaments where they bring in people from Fort McMurray, Calgary, Edmonton on a regular basis. And so there is a, a huge, um, economic benefit for this club. And if we can spice it up a little bit and spruce it up a little bit, maybe? Or maybe it's a popular, but, uh, anyhow, uh, I support this motion.
Just a question for Councilor Plot in regards to your motion, bring it back to the motion that's appropriate to the previous conversation or to the, the budget this fall?
Sorry, my motion would be, so report one's coming back to budgets that we just approved, that this would be part of that report.
Okay.
An add-on so we can debate whether we're spending a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty.
For the twenty twenty-five budget. Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, seeing no one else in the queue or online, Councilor Plot, would you like to close? Seeing none, uh, I'll call the question.
O'Connor in favor?
Councilor O'Connor votes in favor. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm going to now move to item number four and I'll give a few moments for those to, uh, exit the chambers that are not part of the in-camera conversation. I'll look to Councilor Tison for a motion to go in camera.
So, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Councilor Tison. Call the question.
O'Connor in favor?
Thanks, O'Connor. If we can just have two minutes, I just need to get a glass of water. I'll be right back. I actually do. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Bye.